Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
Nine thirty hour has arrived, the time of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Lebanon County Commissioners, January eighteenth. Our, the normal way of beginning our meetings is with a moment of silence, so if you'll join me, please, for that. Thank you, enough out to join me in the pledge to the flag.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I implore you, to those of you that are not normally in attendance at our meetings, refer to the bottom of the agenda, we just have some simple guidelines for the, for protocol for our meetings, so we would appreciate if all of you would cooperate in those efforts. This time, normally, we call for public comment, but many of you are here and are with folks that are already on the agenda later on, so we'll move to Dave Weisner from back at the Gap.
Good morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Dave Weisner from Fort Indian Town Gap, giving it back to the Gap update. As of sixteen January, we've had thirty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-two troops trained on the Gap this year so far. In fact, our numbers are, the way they're looking for, we have scheduled for the rest of the year, will exceed the numbers we had last year, so we're very excited about that.
And that's on the state's calendar versus our calendar?
Yes, ma'am. So that's in there. This weekend, we sent off the headquarters and headquarters battalion of the twenty-eighth Division deployed, they are safely at their mobilization site in Fort Hood, where we brought on to the active service, the United States Army, and then further deployed, so we certainly wish them well. Next week, we will have approximately a little bit over sixteen hundred troops on the Gap. Following week, it'll start picking back up to, from the fifth through the eleventh of February, we'll have over four thousand, so that's pretty steady state operations for this time of the year. We got our final numbers in for our hunting season, we killed or harvested a record number of deer this year, over three hundred and fifteen deer were harvested out of the Gap. That's an important program for us, it cuts down on incidents of lyme disease, rocky mountain spotted fever, and deer in vehicle crashes, so we have that. Anybody that's ever interested in hunting at the Gap, we have an automated system now to come and buy your permit, get the safety briefing, they can go to HTTPS backslash backslash FIG, F-T-I-G dot I sportsman dot net. That will get you in there and tell you what the requirements are to come and hunt and recreate on Fort Indian Town Gap. I'm sure our close-in neighbors will be happy to note, we have no big booming live-fire activities on the Gap for the month of January, February, I can't say that for, so we'll enhance that schedule as it comes up. We really appreciate the Commissioners coming out to our dedication of our grand breaking of our train support center, our new military construction project that's going to commence, although with this icy and snow weather, I don't think they're digging a lot of dirt today, so hopefully things will get thawed and we'll get them well on their way. Pending any of you all's questions, that's all I have for today.
I have no questions, but I do want to compliment you, of course, on the ceremony the other day, and of course, we don't expect less from the armed forces, but it was a very nice ceremony, very professionally done, so we were happy to do it.
We were honored to have you all. Thanks, Steve. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on with the agenda then, and I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes. I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes from our last meeting as printed. All those in favor of approving the minutes indicate so by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The minutes are approved, and our treasurer.
Good morning.
You want to just introduce yourselves, Sally, since we have a lot of folks in attendance?
Yes, Sally, New Lebanon County Treasurer. On your report, I don't know if your dates are correct or not, I know mine weren't correct when I wanted to do this this morning, so if it doesn't say Thursday, January eighteenth on it? Oh, it does there, okay. Maybe it was on another one then. Okay, maybe it was correct, I know some of mine were wrong this morning. Okay, we had receipts on January sixteenth and seventeenth, one million two hundred twenty-nine thousand five hundred thirty dollars and forty-five cents. That brought us to total cash of one billion six hundred thirty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Our expenditures this week were one million one hundred twenty-two thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty cents. We had a distributed tax claim of three thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents, so we have a cash balance of five hundred six thousand five hundred seventy-two dollars and nineteen cents.
Okay, any questions for the treasurer?
I'll move to approve the quarter submitted.
A second motion. All right, I have a motion in a second to approve the treasurer's report as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Treasurer's report is accepted. Thank you, Sally. Good morning, ladies. Would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Yes, yourself. We shall be distracted from the process. Moving on to personnel transactions, whether resignations and terminations, Kyle Fink, State Correctional Officer, resignation effective January eighteenth. Mark Keels, State Correctional Officer, resignation effective January fourth. Dana Marshall, Division Officer Three, resignation effective February second.
I have a motion to accept those.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to accept the resignations and terminations as read. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Under F M L A and leave of absence, Nicole Lavac, courts twelve-week, returning F M L A, effective January, excuse me, returning January ninth. Tami Sharp from the prison, returning from leave of absence, effective January seventeenth. Ed Warros to re, you know, prison, paid and unpaid F M L A, effective one-twenty.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve those leaves of absence. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Under changes of status, transfers, and promotions, we have Brianna Rainier, promotion from case worker one, M H I D E I, to case worker two, at the rate of one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars and forty-six cents by weekly, effective January twenty-ninth. Ashley Weber, promotion from case worker one, I C M, M H I D E I, case worker two, I C M, at the rate of one thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-one cents by weekly, effective January twenty-ninth.
So moved.
Second.
No motion in a second to accept those promotions and transfers. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Under other transactions, President Judge Toak in domestic relations would like to hire Angela Howke as an imaging clerk at the rate of eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-four cents by weekly, effective January twenty-ninth. President Judge Toak in domestic relations would like to hire Melinda Carter, the docket specialist, at the rate of eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-four cents by weekly, effective January twenty-ninth. The district attorney would like to hire Catherine Hirons as a secretary D, at the rate of nine hundred and one dollars and thirty-two cents by weekly, effective January twenty-ninth. And the patronatory clerk of courts would like to rehire Sharon Halaman as a part-time court clerk, at the rate of twelve dollars and three cents per hour, effective January twenty-second.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve those other transactions as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Christina Rivera, incremental increase, telecommunicator at E M eight, at the rate of sixteen dollars and fifty-seven cents, effective January twenty-eighth. Jennifer Everly, incremental increase, telecommunicator at E M eight, at the rate of sixteen dollars and fifty-seven cents, effective January twenty-eighth. Sarah Smith, incremental increase, regular part-time correctional officer at the prison, to the rate of thirteen dollars and fifty-two cents, effective January twenty-eighth. Kelly Young, incremental increase, state correctional officer at the prison, to the rate of fourteen dollars and seventy-nine cents, effective January fourteenth.
So moved. Whoops, second. Sorry. All right, I have a motion in a second to approve those salary board changes. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
For mandated conference seminars, Stephanie Swisher from Children and Youth would like to attend the Managing the Impact of Traumatic Stress on Child Welfare Professional in Mechanicsburg, February ninth, mileage meals tolls reimbursement, six credits mandated by DHS. Taylor Stein Snyder from Children and Youth would like to attend the Court Process in Mechanicsburg, February fourteenth, mileage meals tolls reimbursement, six credits mandated by DHS. Marie Hernandez and Erin Moir from Children and Youth would like to attend the Seven Door Tool Training and Mechanicsburg, February twenty-second and twenty-third, mileage meals tolls reimbursement, twelve credits mandated by DHS. Sharon Gassert and Anna Marquez from Children and Youth would like to attend the Strength-Based Solution-Focused Supervision Training in Mechanicsburg, February thirteenth, mileage meals tolls reimbursement, six credits mandated by DHS. Robert Gambler, Bailey Gambler from Children and Youth would like to attend the Making Permanent Connections Alchems for Professional Development in Mechanicsburg, February seventh, mileage meals tolls reimbursement, six credits mandated by DHS. And Bonnie from the District Attorney's Office would like to attend the J and R Prosecutor's Conference in Mechanicsburg, April tenth and eleventh, two hundred dollar total registration fee, with meals, parking, and tolls reimbursement, nine credits mandated by D H S. Daniel Wright, Jennifer Brown from the District Attorney's Office Detective Bureau would like to attend the two thousand eighteen P A Traffic Safety Conference in State College, April third through the sixth, with lodging, mileage, meals, reimbursement mandated by PND. And Taylor Stein Snyder from Children and Youth was previously approved to attend a training that was, that has now been rescheduled. It is the Out-of-Home Placement and Permease Planning in Mechanicsburg, rescheduled for January twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth, with mileage meals tolls reimbursement, eighteen credits mandated by DHS.
So moved.
Second. All right, I have a motion in a second to approve all of those mandated conference attendance. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The mandated conferences are approved.
And under requested, Carol Davies from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend E four A B D A quarterly meeting in Harrisburg, March thirteenth and fourteenth, eighty-dollar registration fee with mileage reimbursement.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve that requested conference to be attended by Carol Davies from Area Agency on Aging. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Kim Briggs from M H I D E I would like to attend the Social Bar Month Education Series in Harrisburg, on March fourteenth and the twenty-eighth, one hundred and twenty dollar total registration fee with mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second. A motion in a second to approve that requested conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Allen, are you going to download this on YouTube?
Yes.
Good, okay, I'll watch it tonight and confirm my own home. Thanks.
Did you want us to insert here? Okay, that's fine. All right, we'll deviate just a bit from the agenda in order to meet the announced schedule, so our county administrator, Jamie Wollgemuth, has some additional items that we'll normally do at the end of the meeting, but we'll do some of those now.
First item I have is, for your consideration, is the certification of county funds for the twenty-eighteen year for farmland preservation. Department of Agriculture requires that you certify the amount of money that's available toward use and purchases for farmland preservation, and then they, as a board, decide whether there are state funds to match those dollars, whether it be dollar for dollar or sometimes better. This is due by the end of January, so for twenty-eighteen, there are funds available in the amount of two hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars. Those consist of a fifty thousand dollar allocation from the county's general fund, as well as donations from municipalities of ninety-nine thousand four hundred dollars, private donations of three thousand one hundred forty dollars, interest on the farmland preservation account of one thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty-nine cents, clean and green rollback penalties of eighteen thousand one fifty-nine, county Act thirteen funds from the Marcellus Shale Program, forty-two thousand five hundred dollars, for a total of two hundred fourteen thousand seven seventy-eight.
There it says twenty-nine, and the front, it says zero, zero.
It's twenty-nine, but the form that the Department of Ag has rounded down, it's an opium.
Thank you.
All right, now, any comments on the clean and green, or on the farmland preservation fund?
Thrilled that we can put something aside. It's very important to preserve our land for future generations, for farming and food production.
I just think it's worth noting, when we initiated the clean and green program, we designated that the rollback interest on the rollback, we go into clean and green, and we see that gradually increasing now, so I think that's, that's positive as well. All right. Seeing no other comments, do I have a motion to accept the report and the contribution of that, those funds? So?
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second to approve the farmland preservation funding as presented. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right.
The next item I have is enter into a farm lease with Kenneth Rice Farm at one oh four Fox Road, this would be for the farming of property located along four twenty-two East and South of the township, adjacent to the driver's center and in back of the driver's center and adjacent to the CTC school. This would be for the twenty-eighteen year, and would be for twelve hundred dollars payable in October.
I'll move to approve the lease with Ken Rice to farm that land.
Second motion. All right, I have a motion in a second to approve the farmland lease, of which the county owns that, that land, that we're leasing it to a farmer to, to grow crops, and so we get the lease paid by the farmer to the county. All those in favor of approving the lease as presented indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? The lease is approved.
Yeah, I have two bids for property that are in the tax claim repository, the first being for a property at forty-one Lebanon Valley Court. This was offered at tax sale for one thousand five hundred six dollars and fifty-seven cents on September eleventh of seventeen, and did not sell. It was again offered at the judicial sale for an offset price of nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents, and did not sell on December eleventh. So we have a bid from A Hunter Property Management of Anville, and the amount of their bid is one hundred dollars.
Make a motion to accept a bid of one hundred dollars from Charles and Brenda.
Well, it's from A Hunter Property.
I'm sorry, from A Hunter, it was their, Charles and Brenda's property.
Second motion. I have a motion in a second to accept that sale. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, we accept the hundred dollars.
Next one is for, the second bid is for nine Twin Maples Park in Myers Town, and this is a property that was also offered at tax sale for one thousand five thirty-seven eighty-nine on September eleventh, and did not sell. Again, offered at judicial sale for nine fifty-seven seventy-six on December eleventh, did not sell. And we have a bid from Pedro Muniz of Richland for one dollar.
I have a motion in a second to accept that bid of one dollar. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered. Should we indicate that they're both mobile?
Yeah, they're mobile homes, these are of an age and condition where they aren't even lived in any longer, and just being abandoned, so.
It sounds unfortunate, but these are pretty routine for us, unfortunately, but mobile homes, they kind of abandon them after a while, and it's hard to, difficult to recoup the taxes on them.
So typically, the park owner will buy it, remove it, reuse a lot. Next, I have appointments to the M H I D E I Advisory Board. There's a recommendation to reappoint for another three-year term, Dr. Joseph Barber and Ms. Betty Beard.
I'll so moved that we appoint Dr. Joseph Barber and Ms. Betty Beard to the M H I D E I Advisory Board.
Second. All right, I have a motion in a second to make those two appointments to the board. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Appointments are approved.
And also to accept the resignation of Charlotte Tamalte, of Lebanon, who is no longer able to serve on the board.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to accept that resignation. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
We have a request for exemption for real estate taxes for a disabled veteran, Joseph A. LaFrance of one twenty-two Fox Circle, Palmyra.
I'll so moved to exempt Joseph LaFrance from real estate tax.
Second. All right, we have a motion in a second to accept the disabled veteran exemption from real estate tax. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? So ordered.
Last item I have is a proclamation for retiring employee Deborah L. Spitler, is retiring from the Office of Area Agency on Aging, and has served the county for twenty-seven years. She retired December twenty-second of twenty-seventeen as a supervisor in that department. See that she gets this.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to accept that honoring the resignation and retirement with that proclamation. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Proclamation is approved.
And as a reminder, you have eight assessment appeals accepted, and you're starting at one-thirty.
Thank you. So we move to the back of the agenda at this point?
Yep.
And if my understanding is correct, Teresa Wendling is on the agenda at this time to talk to us about Cedar Haven.
Before I start, I just want to apologize, my voice, I'm recovering from some sickness.
So are a lot of us. Do you want anyone to join you at these two seats?
I may need some support.
Thank you. Would you like to just introduce everyone at the table, and so we know who's here?
I see you guys. I'm Teresa Wendling.
Melissa Martin.
Go ahead.
All right, I want to thank you for this opportunity. My name is Teresa Wendling. My husband of forty years, Michael, has been at Cedar Haven Healthcare since February two thousand sixteen. Cedar Haven Healthcare implies they provide health care, maintenance, and improvement of physical and mental health. On Cedar Haven Healthcare's website, it states, "We provide personalized patient care." Mike has had two strokes, and now has a lesion on his brain that causes him to spire. On a good day, he can sit up and feed himself, not as you and I would feed ourselves, but he can manage to get his parade food to his mouth. On a bad day, he is leaning to the right and drooling. Mike is on honey thickened liquids, that is liquids the consistency of honey, to prevent him from choking. Mike has been given regular liquids on several occasions. January twenty-five, I am not sure why, I'm once again reporting that Mike is given regular water with his meds. Cedar Haven Healthcare's response to my grievance about water given to Mike is a sticky note at the nurses' station on One App, stating Mike Wendling is on honey thickened liquids. When residents like Mike are given regular liquids instead of thickened liquids, not only can they choke, but they will aspirate and possibly get pneumonia. Mike is not the only one at Cedar Haven Healthcare on thickened liquids. No one at Cedar Haven Healthcare on thickened liquids is safe. I can't be at Cedar Haven Healthcare twenty-four seven to make sure Mike is not given regular liquids. I still work full-time, but go almost every day after work to feed him, and visit with the other residents in the dining room of One App, and I stand until Mike is in head. I've gotten to know some of the other residents. Jay likes the curtain closed when it's dark outside. Jay likes to talk, but he has trouble getting his words out. V has to be talked in eating his chopped up food. All V's food comes chopped up and in small pieces, but if he gets the wrong tray with regular food on it, he is not safe. No one at Cedar Haven Healthcare that needs special chopped up or parade food is safe if the wrong tray is given. If meds are placed between two mentally deficient residents, and I am the only one supervising who is taking those meds, no one at Cedar Haven Healthcare is safe. I am not on the payroll at Cedar Haven Healthcare. If I visit my husband on a Saturday between two and nine, and no meds are given, but I know my husband gets meds, breakfast, lunch, supper, and midnight, I question if anyone on meds at Cedar Haven Healthcare is safe. If I walk into my husband's room to find three cups of unattended meds on the counter, no one at Cedar Haven Healthcare is safe. I am not on the payroll at Cedar Haven Healthcare. But in August, Mike's hair is almost as long as mine, and he has major issue with med-related scalp psoriasis, so I am cutting his hair and scrubbing his head. His next haircut will be in November by me, because once again, his hair is almost as long as mine, and he is having major itching from the med-related head psoriasis. I have cleaned my husband's room and bedding, because all of the residents, including Mike, deserve a clean room and bedding that is not soiled from the day before. I cleaned the dining room table, because the residents deserve to eat at a clean table. Last March, Mike's dentures were lost when misplaced. July, I am still fighting for Mike's dentures to be replaced. In November, Mike finally got his new dentures, so you can imagine how upsetting it is to go to visit my husband and see his new dentures in a plastic water cup, sitting on the edge of the counter, and not safe in the container for his dentures. These are the dentures I fought Cedar Haven Healthcare for seven months for. October twenty-one, I'm in a panic watching Cedar Haven Healthcare struggle to secure Mike in the hoayor lift. His head is now on the seat of his chair because Cedar Haven Healthcare has failed to educate their staff. Mike will be hitting the head several times in the next four weeks by the pole in the center of the hoayor lift. His head is now bloody from. From October twenty-one to November eighteen, I'm having the same conversation with the nursing supervisor about the proper placement of a used link. It is to be placed under the arms, not over the shoulders. No one needing a hoayor lift at Cedar Haven Healthcare is safe. November third, Mike is sitting in his poop, and then not cleaned properly. His soiled breath is placed on his wheelchair, now contaminating the seat where he sits every day. It is nine forty-nine P M. I feel so bad for Mike's roommate, A Jim, he is still waiting for someone to assist him. November four, Mike had a seizure. I question if he is getting his meds. November five, Mike's pants are saturated. I question when he was cleaned last. November six, Mike's room is disgustingly dirty and his bed is soiled. November twelve at nine A M., they are putting Mike back to bed. He is out of it. I question if he got his meds. I meet at nine thirty to two, no meds are given. At five, Mike is awake. I ask them to get him out of bed so he can eat supper. November twenty-eight, I am packing up J S.'s personal items. It is a sad date for Mike and I. J S. is leaving tomorrow, and I am so happy he is getting out of Cedar Haven Healthcare. J S. knew one day he had been given the wrong meds. He has looked after his roommates and one of He has looked after his roommates in one of five, especially Mike, buzzing them when they needed assistance and making sure Mike's TV had football games on. I will be forever grateful to him for watching over Mike. December third, eight forty-five P.M., I am looking for someone to put Mike to bed. Cedar Haven Healthcare is not where Mike is going to bed. No one in Mike's area has been cleaned or put to bed. January fifteen, 2018, I have been sick since Friday and not been able to go to Cedar Haven Healthcare. I'm wondering if anyone is feeding Mike? I send Linda a text if Mike is okay. This is her response. Saturday night, Pat, Linda's sister, fed Mike because the aids disappear. Sunday night, John, Linda's husband, fed Mike because no one was there to assist. Pat, John, and Linda are not on the payroll at Cedar Haven Healthcare. Mike is listed as a feed. He needs supervision when eating. No one at Cedar Haven Healthcare who is listed as a feed is safe unless you are lucky enough to have three angels named John, Linda, and Pat, who are just there to visit their dad, but are getting personalized patient care and are watching over the residents in the dining room of One App. As I wrote this through my chairs on January fifteen, I thought that would be all I had to say, but I have one more entry in my journal. It's last night, Wednesday, January seventeen. I went to visit and feed Mike after work. It is not a good day. Mike is having trouble swallowing his parade food. The nurse is here to give Mike his meds. Three small cups of regular liquid meds. I suggested to the nurse that Mike is on honey-thicken liquids and his meds should be thickened. I cannot be at Cedar Haven Healthcare twenty-four seven to make sure Mike is not given regular liquids. No one at Cedar Haven Healthcare on thickened liquids is safe. My husband of forty years is not safe at Cedar Haven Healthcare. Before I leave Cedar Haven Healthcare, I once again have words with the head nursing supervisor. I want it documented that your nurses have once again tried to give my husband regular liquids. What can I do to fix this? I request Mike be checked to make sure his lungs are clear. I agree with chest X-ray if necessary. This is not the first, second, third, or fourth time I have had this very conversation, but I want you to know. On October twentieth, 2017, it was a Friday, the first day of this strike, and also the first day that I had the conversation about my husband and the nursing staff giving him regular liquids. Cedar Haven Healthcare website states personalized patient care. One last thing. All of Mike's pensions, his social security, that he has worked for so hard all of his life, goes to Cedar Haven Healthcare so Mike can have personalized patient care. Mike is also covered under my insurance, Medicare, and Medicaid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask you one more.
Sure.
Is he private pay or are you not comfortable asking that, answering that?
I am paying.
Okay, so he has private pay.
All of his pensions, all of his social security, my insurance gets filled, Medicare gets filled, Medicaid gets filled in that order. All of his pensions, all of his social securities goes to Cedar.
Thank you.
The other two ladies have anything that you'd like to say?
Yes. Hi, my name is Cedar and I have a brother that has been living at Cedar Haven for the last eight years. The quality of care is heartbreaking to say the least. One of them is he needs restorative therapy and since the beginning of this strike, he has not gotten better. He's losing the strength in his knees and I started with him on the fifth week to try and get him to go up and down his steps so I can take him away. If I'm not there, it doesn't get done. And that's sad. They did start having it a couple of weeks ago, but two people is enough for a florist. It involves nursing assisting him to walk and do the steps only times. When I started with him, he could only go up one, three steps, and he has stopped. That is it. And it's in his care plan. And that's been since the beginning. Also, several times over the last few months, when I walk into his room around seven-thirty in the morning, trays are giving out for breakfast and most times, I would take my tray to my brother so it's warm. And the resident has decided then, there's always a toilet there that is filled from the night before. Sometimes he goes in the morning and it's still there. But the other morning, he sat on that polyfoam and ate his breakfast. And that toilet, it smells. You know, you leave it in the night before and with the medicine that people are taking, sometimes the odor is terrible. Also, they get a bath once a week. You know, that's the way most nursing centers are, but my brother was given a bath a week ago Monday. Okay, so this last Monday, however, he was supposed to have a bath, never came. I had to call in as of Thursday, and they've been sick in there. They've been quarantined. He didn't have his bedding done for over a week and a half, and I had to call to get him a bath. Somehow, he got lost in this. That's not good. It isn't sanitary. It sometimes smells in his room. It's just awful. And the same thing with the hair. You know, it might not be a medical condition, but waiting almost eleven weeks for the first time they had their haircut, and not everybody got it done. It's all that a part-time girl can do, then she quit. The women, the pride that they have always taken in their lives to have their hair done to look good, and men too. There they are, getting their hair washed. They had a perm, it's just sticking everywhere. How can they be proud of themselves? You know, they don't have much. All their money is gone. They get forty-five a week. Their money is gone, and what they have to do is sit with other residents, talk, have a good time, have some crafts, and they sit there with their hair not done. They don't get a break in the afternoon. It's like they're in a prison. They don't even get an afternoon snack. It's pretty bad. It does mean a lot for the grooming. It means an awful lot to them. The people on strike are like family to these residents. They have known the residents for many years. Without these experienced folks from our community caring for my brother plus all the residents there, Cedar Haven is not the same. The county commission needs to get involved because these are the people you represent, and this place will never go back to being what it was if they get replaced. One thing I want to say is when these people get sick, in all these years, those people working in Cedar Haven are more of a family than any one of us could ever be. We go in, we spend so many hours, but we leave. They depend on them. For my brother, it was a lot of trust. Took almost a year for him to start trusting people. Does he trust them now? No. Will he tell when something's wrong? Only if he can't take it anymore. He is mentally retarded, so it does take him a little bit of time to do it. That was a hard thing for trust. But it's just not the same. You know, when these people get sick, those nurses and CNA will do anything for those. And with this quarantine time and them having diarrhea and their throw up, would it be nice to have people be known? They don't. You know, one day it's from Arkansas, one day it's from Delaware, one day it's another company that is in there. I know they're doing what they think is okay, and we've always had nursing come in if we were short. Like on a weekend, they would have to put a lot of our regulars there. And I just think that everybody should look and see. Cedar Haven just isn't what it was. And they're at a standstill. Out of thirty-five nursing homes between here and Lancaster, there are only three that will take Medicare and Medicaid. Where are the residents going though? They just can't pick up because they haven't the money. There's none. It's like a prison.
So he is not private pay?
Then they are, you are not.
But your brother specifically is not private pay?
Right. So there's no, if he was, if he could pay for himself, I could take him somewhere, but no, I can't. I have to say.
Thank you. You have something for us?
Yes, please. And thank you for the opportunity. My aunt, my great aunt, has been a resident of Cedar Haven for four years now. She's been a resident of Lebanon County her entire life. She will be ninety in April. There, she's one of the residents that I would say, even though she has no filter, she is very, very well oriented. Still has her mind, still makes her own decisions. So medications, she's used to medications that she gets on a regular basis, every day, morning, noon, night. She knows what they are. We've had incidents where, similar to Teresa, medications weren't being given. The wrong medications were being given, not enough medications being given. My fear here is Viv is able to make decisions for herself. She's of sound mind. What's happening with her neighbor who can't, who cannot speak for herself, who cannot make those decisions? What's happening to them? Are they getting the wrong meds? It's, it just, it blows my mind. I'm actually very grateful that her mind is still there so that she can speak up not only for herself, but others. She is the president of the Residents Council and takes that job very seriously. So I am here as her voice, but also for the other residents who can't speak for themselves. She has diabetes, CHF, a number of other contributing factors. One of the things that doctor prescribed is boots that go on her lower legs, and it is to help with the edema in her legs and the fluid buildup. There were four days, five days straight when she came back from the hospital in December, that those boots were not put on her legs. And this is the result of those boots not being put on her legs. She has a big, very little independence, but she promoted herself around the nursing home. She could do that when her feet are so swollen, she can't get shoes on. Similar to Sue and Teresa, there's continued issues with personal care surrounding bathrooms. When she came back from the hospital, she was required to stay in the bed. She got bedrest for a couple of days, so she had to use bedpans. She called and called for the bedpans, sat for over an hour waiting for someone to come so she could go to the bathroom. She ultimately couldn't wait any longer, and she ended up soiling herself. She was utterly embarrassed, worried about herself and how others would see her. And it felt so horrible that there was nothing I could do about it. I can complain and complain and complain, no one's doing anything about it. Last week, she wears a brief, a brief to bed. And last night, well, I'm sorry, last week, during third shift around midnight, she had called and said she needs to be changed, and she had urinated in her brief and it needs to be changed. Six A.M. the following morning, she was still waiting there to change. So six, that's where she sat and waited. Personal care, again, just adding to what they've already said, for four weeks, she went out to shower without a bath, without having her hair washed. Her hair was itching. I don't know about you, but I get a shower every day, at least once a day. I don't know how anyone can allow that to happen to someone, not give them that care. What if it was your uncle, your aunt, your mom, your dad, your brother or sister? What would you do? And this is, it's horrible. It's absolutely horrible. I can't stand around and watch it anymore. That's why we're here. Something has got to change.
And is he private pay?
No. She's not. She's not trying to live. We would have no word to her either. I, Alex, would have to bring her home.
No, but the reason I ask is have you considered reporting these things to the state? This is the first time I've heard all of this so succinctly and passionately, and I just wondered if it has been reported, if these are incidents that you have. You have a journal. I mean, the documentation is fantastic, and has it been reported?
I have called the state. I have been on with the state. I complained about the toilet. I complained about on the three F floor. There were eleven people who cannot feed themselves. Now, by law, they tell you that you only need one CNA for twenty residents. That's okay, but there are exceptions. And you have eleven people or whatever that need to be fed, you gotta have more. I complained about the hair. Well, I'm not really worried about the hair right now. We'll see what we can do. He comes in at eight o'clock in the morning after they're fed. There was so many of them, they hadn't been alerted to it because that's not the first time this has happened. They had, the state had to be alerted that, or they were telling, they called in there to tell them that they are coming. When they came, the speech therapist was there. They had other CNAs they were helping to feed. That's not the way it is. It just isn't. But I took the liberty of calling.
And have you submitted anything in writing?
No, I talked, I talked right to the man. He was supposed to send me a letter of what he found. He never did, but he was in there.
And that's the Department of Health, is it?
Okay, I did it for the food too, because when front row was almost ate raw chicken, it wouldn't have been for her aunt. Imagine how sick he would have gotten. So it's, it is bad.
I know how much all of you care about these folks, and it must be so difficult for you to stand by and see all this happening. And so, again, as Joanna said, this is the first time we're hearing these stories, and I'm glad that you're reporting them to the right people, yeah?
I would just be there.
I would say that I think your documentation is wonderful, and it should be put in writing to the state so that they have something in hand to go in with. Talking is wonderful in person, I mean, on the phone, but you need a paper trail, in my humble opinion, because that way, they can enforce a little easier because they have something to fall back on, what they're looking for.
The state is not, the state is not here to have to work fast. They have numerous calls to the state, and they're supposed to check that out right away. They take their time. And I don't even think writing to them, that's supposed to push aside. They're, we're not the only ones that have complained. We're not the only ones that walked out and they're better ready to come up. And that's, that's true. You see pee on the wall? That should be cleaned for three days. It gets, when my brother got changed at nighttime because he peed, they took the diaper inside his lounge pants with the pad, put it on his bed, and he slept like that the rest of the night. I try and smile, you know Tommy. I try and smile with him. He's antsy. Him doing, they make him take him out and run out to shop for Christmas. It's a prison.
Well, these presentations, I presume you knew when you came in, will be published. The county has a long tape. And individually, I hope that my camera has not failed, and we'll post those as well. We have Gordon Wise here from W O B R. So I think that you can also utilize those links to be able to communicate to the state what's going on, and I would gladly forward them as well on your behalf because I think it's important they know what's going on.
Yeah, I think it's important that you make the kind of concentrated effort that you're making here today to inform the folks at the state that these things are happening because they are the agency that would enforce that. We, obviously, we're happy to be here for you and... We, obviously, we're happy to be here for you and listen, but we do not have any enforcement power in this board over Cedar Haven or any other nursing home in the county. So your, your main emphasis, I think, needs to be to the Department of Health to get, to have them enforce things that are not being done.
Father, from the county, yourselves to the state, would make a difference? After all you've done for us because of so much.
Well, that's, that's certainly something that is a possibility.
You're much higher than we are.
When we're, when, when, when we've concluded here this morning, I think we'll try to, to join together at the three commissioners to make some kind of an effort to, to help correct the matter. But I, I really, and you know, I, I don't think our position is going to have a huge impact on the Department of Health. I think, I think you folks need to make these things as clearly known to them as you are making them known to us. I think that's an important piece. All right. The three of you have anything else to add at this point? Then I, I think we have some representatives from the union with ASME, particularly someone from national headquarters and also Penny Kleinfelder from the local.
My name is Penny Kleinfelder. I'm the president of our local union at Cedar Haven.
I'm Danielle Kohler, I'm also on the board of the unions for Cedar Haven.
I, I want to start out with the comment that you had just made about after this is all over, you'll try to discuss what you can do. You won't try to discuss what you will do. You need to step in and do something. After all, two thousand and fourteen, you created this in Congress. I don't think you realized who you were selling it to, the nursing home. You thought, from my understanding, that it was CHR, which was the company's initials that you were selling it to. And that's in fact not even who you were selling it to. It took members like us who have no experience in politics, we have no experience in investigating, we have no experience in anything but nursing. And it took us to find out exactly, looking up who purchased Cedar Haven. And if you would have been looked into, you would have saw who purchased it. It was a gentleman who had a company that purchases nursing homes. He drives them into the ground, sells them, and then, you know what? He don't buy another nursing home in the same company name. He sells it, he starts a new company with a new name. So you can't, it's not as easy to track, but we found it. I think that should have been taken care of way back then and we wouldn't be in this situation. The residents wouldn't be in the situation they're in. Just so you know, the gentleman that owns Cedar Haven now, which is Stone Barn Holdings is the company has, it's going south, as you all know. Well, guess what? He already started a new company, Wind River Investments or Wind River Holdings, and he's putting bids on other nursing homes. I'm not sure if you get calls from other counties who want to sell nursing homes and are looking to, for words of wisdom, or words to tell them who, or references, basically. If you're looking, if they're looking for references from this gentleman who owns Stone Barn Holdings. His name is Chaz B. Blalock. You, you see what's going on. I know you, this is the first time we've sat down and talked to you, but you've seen it in the news, you've heard it on the radio. It's not a good situation. And I don't feel he should be getting references to purchase other nursing homes from other counties who are going to end up in the same dilemma that we're in. I don't know if I can give you each a card? Would that be all right? Thank you. And then if you could pass that one down, please. Thank you. When we decided we wanted to come to this meeting today, we wanted to show you that this is not just us. These are families, employees, and many other people that have no, nothing to do. They don't have residents that live at Cedar Haven. They don't have family there. They don't have employees that work there. These are just regular citizens who are your constituents, who feel Cedar Haven is going through a crisis and they need help from you. And I know that you are going to say, there's, there's nothing we can do, it's not in our hands anymore. But I don't believe that.
How would you know that that's what we would say?
Well, because I, because I hear things that come.
I'm, I'm keeping an open mind, trying to find out what you're asking of us and trying to work with.
Okay.
So no, I don't assume that.
All right. I, I apologize, I won't assume. But there's got to be something that can be done to bring this man back to the table, to negotiate, which he refuses to do, and to stop him from, excuse the language, raping the employees of Cedar Haven. Because that's what he's doing. We're, like I said, we are not the only ones who feel that way, the employees and the staff. Because these are all signed by Lebanon County residents who are all voters. There are over twelve hundred and sixty cards that have been filled out in just a two-week period when we decided to come here. And we thought, you know what? We need to get, we need to show them that it's not only us. So I just feel that something needs to be done. You could step in and do something. I was under the impression that when the sale was first, when it was first done, part of the agreement was that CHR would run the facility. I was under the impression that that was part of the agreement in that sale. Well, after a year, Mr. Blalock booted him out and they are not running the facility. It is Stone Barn that's running the facility. He's taking like three million dollars since he's bought the place that he would have made in profits. And he's sending it to his other companies and he's calling them management fees. That would have been a profit if he wanted to send them to other companies. Three million dollar profit. I'm not talking about a little bit of money. So I'm going to give you today Danielle.
All right. My name is Danielle Kohler. I was born here in Lebanon County, raised here all my life. I've been an employee at Cedar Haven for almost eighteen years. I started off there as a CNA and then I went and got my LPM degree in two thousand and four. I decided to take a job at Cedar Haven and then stay there for eighteen years because I care about the people there. The residents are like family to me. I don't just know their medical needs, I know their stories, their jokes, their heartbreaks and their joys. I think we all deserve such care. So I am here today as a striker, but also as someone who has a personal stake in what happens to residents at Cedar Haven. In fact, my, for the last two years, my aunt, Mary Ann Oblinsky, has been a resident at Cedar Haven. My aunt has cerebral palsy. She is unable to walk and she cannot take care of herself. Mr. Blalock, the owner, is trying to tear apart the family that has made Cedar Haven a five-star facility. He is doing this by provoking a strike. The labor board has informed us that Mr. Blalock's company violated federal labor laws and that they intend to take our unfair labor practice charges to complain. He is also doing this by cutting costs of patient care while increasing what he spends on management services. Since taking over Cedar Haven, Mr. Blalock made sure his outer state management company took two point eight million dollars in fees. Meanwhile, he has asked us, the people who deliver the care at Cedar Haven, to take severe cuts to health care and pay time off. We do not think our elected representatives should sit by and let the owner of Cedar Haven destroy three hundred good jobs in Lebanon County. If you care about our vote, about your voters, the people who live at Cedar Haven and the folks like me who spend their careers there, you will find a way to get involved and protect our jobs and our families.
Is Michael here?
No, he's not coming. Is there someone from the National Union here?
International?
Well, whatever.
There, there is. Is somebody going to speak? Meredith?
I mean, I'm staff of the International Union, but I'm in the planning room speaking.
I just want to give you, I just, I just have one, I want one more thing to say. Just an example, I want to give you my example of me at Cedar Haven. When, when the county owned Cedar Haven, I had received twenty-six personal days a year. Okay? And I understand that's a little above and beyond what a lot of people do get. But in two thousand and fourteen, when Cedar Haven sold to Mr. Blalock, the first year CHR ran us, they were the management of Cedar Haven. Nothing had changed there. That kind of stayed the same. We had a two percent wage increase, I believe it was that year. A two percent wage increase that year. All of our other things stayed the same. The following year, when he no longer wanted CHR to run the facility and he took over, that year, which was last year, I myself lost sixty, or no, wait. I myself lost two personal days, two vacation days, two sick days and two holidays. That's eight days. Oh yeah, four personal days. You're right. So I went, I went to drop down and I am now current, was currently getting twenty personal days a year. With this new contract that he implemented, I was getting twenty personal days, it was twelve vacation days and eight sick days, which is a total of twenty. His new contract that he implemented, even though it was voted down, gives me, and I've been there seven, or eleven years, I'm going on eleven. His new number for me, personal, vacation and sick time altogether is seven. I will be getting seven vacation days, personal days a year.
Earn every quarter.
Yeah.
You only get so many quarters.
Yeah, you only get it earned. So right now I have two and a half days. So if I save them up, maybe by the end of the year I could go on vacation for a minute, I don't get sick the rest of the year. That comes with no wage increase and that comes with tripling my health insurance. Which, we're through Blue Cross and his Blue Cross that he has for us, his did not go up in price. He's putting less towards our health insurance, which is what tripled our health insurance. It's not because health insurance went up. A lot of people say, well, health insurance is going up everywhere. That's, that was not the case in this situation. I, I saw one of Joellen's videos, thank God you do that, of one of your meetings when Mr. Phillips, you had said, oh, since the sale of Cedar Haven, everything's so wonderful. This nursing staff is making so much more money. And I couldn't tell you everything you said. I know, I watched it several times, but you had said how, how everything was going very well at Cedar Haven. That the nursing staff had gotten a pay increase and everything else. I want to just enlighten you a little bit about that pay increase. The pay increase that we got when he took everyone up, he took CNAs up to fifteen dollars an hour and he took LPNs up to twenty-two an hour. Nursing staff that have been there for thirty years, thirty-plus years, they've dedicated their life to Cedar Haven and the residents that live there. We have several members who, one in particular who's an LPM, she has been up there over thirty years. When they brought everyone up to twenty-two dollars an hour, that gave her a three cent raise. She was making twenty-one dollars, ninety-seven cents, that's how much.
That's me.
Exactly. She knows exactly what I'm talking about. That gave her a three cent raise. Later, when raises came out where he wanted to give everyone a fifty cent raise, that was only for anyone who did not qualify under the going up for the CNA or the LPM status, to going up. So her three percent raise, her three cent raise was her only raise she got last year. And this year she gets nine.
Well, Mike, that's where, with the prison next door in Renova, we're sort of tuned into the salary competition and we were at sixteen eighty-three an hour for our LPNs and we just went to twenty dollars because of Cedar Haven being at twenty-two and how difficult it is for us to attract. So that's, that's quite a jump from sixteen eighty-three to twenty-two. And when you said a two percent raise, I was like, gee, that's not what I understood. The LPNs got more than two percent.
That was the first contract I heard about that.
Yeah, the first contract.
But it's still quite a.
The second contract, but that is for the ones that came, that are just coming in.
And.
So my LPM that, that just jumped up that three cents to make twenty-two dollars an hour is making the exact same money as somebody who's just hired off the street. And she's been there for over thirty years.
Understanding it better, but that's still.
Right.
For us to be competing next door is where I was, what I was referring to. And the other thing I was, this is all I have to go on, is that you went, Cedar Haven went from four star to five star in terms of the evaluation. And I thought that indicated the quality of care had been very good. So that's, those were, I was basing my remarks on sixteen eighty-three to twenty-two dollars and the fact that you went from four star to five star when it was under the county. So, I mean, those, those were from one, you know, what I was referring.
Cedar Haven is a five-star facility, but the people that are in this room are what makes Cedar Haven a five-star facility.
And that actually, that, that's, that's taken into effect every year. They go back over the year to decide what star you are. And with everything that's happened there now, I guarantee when that happens next year, it will no longer be a five-star.
Yeah.
The other thing is with your employees over at the prison, do they pay for their health insurance?
No.
No. See, we're, we might be getting a couple more bucks an hour, but we're paying a ridiculous amount of money. Plus, we know what that, we know, we all know what the county benefits were like.
I paid for my husband's insurance. I'm the one who just got the three cents an hour raise. So I really got to watch where I spend that money. My health insurance is sixteen thirty-two hundred with the five thousand dollar deductible. Per person. I might work there half my life.
The CNAs or the LPNs over at the jail don't do half of what they do at Cedar Haven.
I'm not, I'm not disputing, I'm just saying the numbers, we needed to bring ours up because of the competition in the marketplace and all the vacancies around Lebanon County and the LPM area. We, we had realized that we weren't competitive.
But we understood. The point is, we understood that we made less money when we were county-owned, but it was worth it because of the benefits.
Yes.
So it made it all worth it. This gentleman is giving, is under the impression that if he gives us a couple more dollars an hour, we get so much less in benefits that at the end of the day, I might be making that much more an hour, but I'm bringing home less an hour. I'm bringing, my paycheck is less now than it was not ten years ago when I started. And that, it's, it's not right that, that we seem to be going backwards. And, you know, we just, we need, we need, you need to step in and help us do something.
And not just for the staff, but for the residents.
For the residents.
Absolutely.
I mean, these poor residents. I appreciate these family members who came today and spoke on their family's behalf and that is wonderful. But what about all those residents in there who don't have family? Because we were their family.
That's right.
And they have no voice to speak about what's going on or what's happening to them.
That's what I said. It must be very difficult for you to stand by and allow that to happen.
It's very difficult. Walking out that day was very difficult. It's not something we wanted to do.
I'd just like to say I'm really sad to hear all of this today. Supporting you is extremely important because you're still family even though you're no longer working for the county. I've done it in my own small ways, but I certainly will write to the state and with the commissioners. If we do a joint, that would be wonderful. But I do have a question. But I do have a question. Sue, I think you said about physical therapy that your brother, brother wasn't getting, do they no longer have a physical therapy department?
Oh yes, that was physical therapy.
That's what brought in the most money for us.
This was restorative. This is done by aides, okay, where they will help somebody get up and maybe walk down the hall. They need to get exercise, those that can still walk. Okay, so for almost eleven weeks, saying nobody, then they had two. I mean, I complained all that time, and after the fifth weekend, I saw, saw my brother alone where his knees were getting stiff. Because I take him away, I see. And I started him going up and down the steps at the, in the bedroom.
Now, I heard you sing that, and I was just wondering.
And then they started getting, they have two people, as, that's all I know so far. You can't do all the residents in there that could walk a little bit.
What it is, after they're back with physical therapy, they're done, then they go to the restorative program. That's where we go on the floors and walk them, exercise them, are what they need. It's what therapy tells us to do then.
So the nurses are supposed to supplement what physical therapy does, is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, now I understand.
And they do, they do get reimbursement for that? And if it's part of the care plan, it must be done in order for them to get reimbursement? And I'm not going to make any accusations, but I would bet money that if she went to look at her brother's files, that it would probably, probably state that he had, had his restorative, so that they could get their money.
Oh yeah.
So I, I would.
Not only the restorative therapy, but their beds.
Yeah.
They are all checked off that it was done. Like, the day they didn't know Mike was in bed, it was checked off that Mike was in bed, but Mike was not in bed.
Do you, like, with your cellphone, take pictures of those records so you have a file of your own?
No, they can't get to those.
It's on, it's on computers now.
As well as she can't get to see if those documentation.
They could ask to see medical records, they are all on a computer now, though.
They're now public.
Aren't even able to see them.
No, it's there.
Family, absolutely.
No, no.
They're not.
But they could be sent to the Department of Health, is that not right?
If they were to ask for a copy of their records, and then if they wanted to send them?
And the only reason I say that is because there was, there are still a handful of people at Cedar Haven that used to work there that didn't go out on strike because they're part-timer for whatever reason. And the only reason I say that is because the flustered aide mentioned to me that so-and-so was marked, he had a bath, but we all know he didn't. And, and that's the only, that's all hearsay to me. Like, I have pictures of unattended meds, I don't have pictures of records. I asked for my husband's med records when he got his medication, and it looks to me like he got his meds, but if I'm there and I didn't see him get his meds, like, where are those meds?
That's, that's insurance fraud, Medicare fraud. I'm just saying, if that's accurate, that that's what they, that's what he's, that's what's happening to the manager.
I mean, you understand, though, like, part of the problem is if we're not there and don't, right, if people aren't there to witness it, like, part, like, part of the recourse of the DOH and of the ombudsman is to go in and interview the resident. And if the resident is not, you know, lucid or verbal, like, that's not right. And so, for a while, the gentleman that Teresa spoke about, who was his own power of attorney, was next to her husband. And he, and so he was documenting, right, and he actually sent a letter to the Department of Health, to the area hospitals, to a whole bunch of people, saying, you know, "This is what happened to me, and this is what happened to the person next to me," right? Because he has, you know, the ability to do that, right? So that's part of the sort of frustration in filing sort of routine complaints, is that the follow-up is to then go in and interview people. Like, there's not a lot of ways of documenting some of this stuff that's kind of happening on an ongoing basis.
And then, and it becomes a he-said, she-said sort of thing. I said, "This person didn't get their medicine," and they're, they come two days later, but they have no way of knowing anything really, you know what I mean? So they have no way of knowing that. But for some reason, they do get a heads up when they're coming, because all of a sudden, when they're coming, there's all these people here.
This is a private company, but I'd be willing, if the other folks, commissioners, would be willing to write a joint letter trying to get people back to the table and put public pressure on both sides to get to talking and to put some light on, on some of these issues of, of care, so I'd be willing to do that.
Absolutely, I'll make that motion.
Well, I think we need to consider exactly what it is that we.
We can look at the details, we can have a motion.
Folks, I'm not opposing that. In fact, I said that initially, that we would take a look at that. And I still am willing to, to do that, but I, I don't want to make a motion that says we're going to write a letter because the three of us need to agree on what is in that letter. Wouldn't you agree with that?
Well, we can, or we can each write our own, and we can send it all in one envelope, but I'd like to write one from the three of us, but whatever. I think we should have a motion to write the letter, and we work out the details. Once we have the motion, we can, we can talk about it. We can't talk about it if it has to come to a vote. If we vote, then we can talk about it. That is the law. That is the sunshine law.
Commissioner Litz, I don't think you need to lecture me on the law. Thank you. I, I do want to clarify just a few things. We did do a lot of research, and we visited three different nursing homes owned by three companies that made offers for Cedar Haven. We turned down an offer higher than CHR's offer, and we did not sell the nursing home to Stone, Stoneboat, Barn Holdings, or Chaz Blaylock. And we sold the nursing home to CHR, who owns Lancaster Counties and has a very good reputation there, as we came to understand. And they manage Berks County's nursing home, and I know the commissioners in Berks County very well, and they recommended CHR, and were very happy with CHR itself. We did do the right things and made the right decision and sold to the right company. Unfortunately, the man who owned CHR, Mike DiArcangelo, committed to buy Cedar Haven, but if you'll recall, the closing was put off for two or three months during that process, and he got himself in a financial situation where, as I understand, Mr. Blaylock came in and had the money to carry Mike DiArcangelo through the process and after the fact, because he had that much money invested, exerted force on, on Mike DiArcangelo. That's the true scenario of what actually happened, so.
I believe that Stone Barn was, Stone Barn's name was on the actual paperwork for the sale. So Stone Barn's name was on the paperwork of the sale.
CHR only owned five. CHR only owned five percent of that percent. The other ninety-five percent was.
It wasn't even CHR, it was DiArcangelo himself. So before the sale was finalized, there, there was clearly another owner involved. And that's, that's our question, is, did, did you, did you not ask where the ninety-five percent stake was coming from?
No, I don't think that was known before the sale.
I mean, I'm not saying that you knew exactly who it was, I'm saying you knew it wasn't his money that he had a partner, because nursing homes are not annual assets. Nursing homes are regulated, the ownership has to be public on the federal side, on the state, like, that stuff is all, has to be transparent. So that, I mean, there has to be a moment in which, like, you know where the money is coming from.
And the gentleman who offered the higher bid, he bought, he bought another county home around the area and is doing fantastic.
And we have a collective bargaining.
Took, took, is taking great care of his employees and his residents. And his residents. And here we are, in a funk.
But I do, I do want to, want you to understand that we did make appropriate decisions and had checked out CHR. In fact, Commissioner Litz suggested that we use CHR to do the study, and that's how we ended up with CHR, so. They came to us very well recommended, and that's who we made the sale to, to CHR.
And we had advice from President of Nursing and we had some other folks from Cedar Haven with us on those visits, so that was all part of the.
That was his industry.
We have the President of the Union.
But we, I mean, we have collective bargaining agreements with CHR in other parts of the state. And that's not, right, we know that they are not the ones that can, that can deal with this situation, and, and, you know, I think, I, I think that regardless, I think that, you know, the fact that there was, that it wasn't clear who exactly was going to control it until after the deal was done, I think, I mean, I think that is something that, you know, if, if other company, if other counties come to you guys and say, "Here's this guy, Chaz Blaylock, he wants to buy our nursing home." I mean, I think that, that should be, that's part of the vast, right? And I think that, you know, there is a pending litigation between CHR and Mr. Blaylock over what happened, and they're being booted from the facility. It's filed in Montgomery County, it's pending. I encourage you to read the complaint.
I certainly appreciate that, and certainly we would not have intentionally done anything that would create this situation. You know, I can certainly speak to that. I would entertain, Commissioner Litz, you already made a motion.
Second.
Would you clarify the language of the motion for me?
The language of the motion is for the three commissioners to work out a letter with our administrator to send to Charles Blaylock and to, actually, I'd like to also include in that motion to notify the Department of Health on, on behalf of the residents about what the testimony we heard here today.
Comfortable with that as well?
Sure, and I was even thinking beyond that, too, it could be used as a letter to the editor, to put public pressure. Or some other way of getting it out to the public through the merchandiser, Daily News or.
I would amend the motion, accept amendment to the motion to also do a press release with the letters.
I have one final question. With the sale, included in the sale, was there an inclusion in there to fix the roof of Cedar Haven? Does anybody know?
No, it wasn't that specific. It didn't itemize certain things about the building.
In our defense for that, I mean, if you put twenty-five million dollars to buy something, you would, the assumption would be that those kind of things, they would have to protect the property. So no, I, you can't get to that granular level, but, I mean, that would be, someone buys a house, you assume they're going to keep the roof, you know, good and that kind of thing, so. I'm surprised that that would be neglected, but.
Just like the residents.
Are you saying the roof is leaking? Have you seen any?
Oh yeah.
You have pictures of it?
Yeah, they hide it very well.
Okay, well, some pictures of the mold would be very helpful to send along as another health concern for the Department of Health.
Problem is, like they said, once they call the state, it's like, everybody's calling everybody, "Let's go." State's coming in here, and everybody's, "Oh, Mrs. So-and-so."
But Cheryl, that's why, that's why, I think the public pressure of, of.
But that's what I'm saying, when they had called the state.
Yeah, I'm just saying, from local pressure is what I think may.
And I think that's great, but what I'm saying to when the state has been called.
It's, it's.
If there was even a 4F resident that made it out to us.
You guys communicate with the headquarters and not the regional office.
We believe they did respond, but they're getting the heads up inside that they're coming.
So they have time to bring in extra people and.
Everyone looks nice.
You guys have been so brave to, first of all, be out there, but also to come here today as organized as you are. You've really made a very powerful presentation. You've gotten all three of us to agree to speak up on your behalf, and I commend you for that strength. Congratulations.
You know what, I was at a meeting with you three, with the broker before it was sold, and I know for a fact that the black mold was brought up with you people.
And we had addressed it at that time, but it's still leaking, did it come back, was the question.
But yeah, because it was brought up. About the black mold, and it will, if that would be taken care of. So this isn't something new to that. It's been there for years.
That was three years ago, so we can't talk about now.
Yeah, just saying that it was brought up.
And then, I always protect the residents' health, but also protect the worker's health.
And the visitors.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The residents' health, the employee's health, are a big thing that lives out, but also our residents as well. Everybody's health, but they're cutting back on employees' hours, take time and where they're allowed to take every quarter, and sometimes, versus it's longer than that, and, you know, mold is an issue, you know, would be an issue in that as well.
Or like, right now, when they're all sitting there, four and in, well, your one or two days that you got for that quarter, they're probably gone, because you've probably got sick.
We do have a motion on the floor, so is there any other discussion appropriate to the motion?
Just get to work.
The, the motion is that the three commissioners would sit together and write a letter appealing to Mr. Blaylock to come back to the table, addressing the, the care issues and the health issues that you're concerned with and we're concerned with as well. And to also make that letter so that it's of multipurpose, it can, will go to, Mr. Blaylock, it will go to the Department of Health, will be used as a press release, and anyone else that we find appropriate to send that letter to. Have a motion, and a second, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. That letter will be written, those cases. I scheduled to meet with some folks from the union at eleven, are you still inclined to have those independent meetings with the?
I told you it was eleven thirty, but.
Well, eleven thirty works.
We can do it earlier.
No, whenever we're done here, I'll be happy to do it.
We'll come right down, we're going to go down, we'll come right down. We'll come right down, when we go down, we'll come right down.
Thank you.